Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as per all.
Hey, I would like to get a motion for approval of the present agenda.
Motion.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, we go into our public comment section. Uh, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow the Board of Education to hear as a whole, any comments that are related to an agenda item or school business. During this public comment period, the Board of Education will hear comments from students, parents, employees, district residents, and district property and business owners for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes in total duration and three minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone here would like to speak?
There's only one person.
There's only one person connected online and that's our president, Mr. Hodgson, who's ill this evening.
Would you like to speak, Mr. President? Oh, we'll do that in board comment. Okay, then we will move into a board member comment. Anyone like to address?
Hello. I just wanted to say I was able to chaperone the homecoming dance and it had a really nice turnout and the kids were dancing and it was nice. They stayed and had a really good time. So it was just a nice experience. It's great to see them. That's it.
Okay. Well, then we'll move into our building and departments reports. We have a special education update.
So, welcome.
Hello.
I think most of you know, Mr. Simon, our Director of Pupil Services, and he'll be providing you with one of his annual two updates on special education.
And there's a slide.
Yep.
Tell you that's the second. Hi, everyone. How you all doing tonight?
Good.
Right size it and we'll be almost ready to go from here. I have a variety of information I'm going to present to you tonight, uh, kind of a continuation from previous years to give you updates on things I've told you in the past to let you know where we're at. Some good information, some I find a little scary information and not as good. Uh, so it varies. So, so if you can just switch over, kind of.
Next slide.
Yep. Yes, please. So I want to touch base. Last year I came to you on that we were introducing the Orton Gillingham reading curriculum. It was uh, the previous summer before the last school year that we had several of our elementary school teachers trained in the Orton Gillingham reading curriculum. It is a research-based phonics-based reading curriculum. We were very excited about it. Uh, the majority of our special education's teaching staff, the elementary school were trained in it, uh, and we went through a year of implementation on it. Uh, the teachers were ecstatic over it. Uh, the couple of teachers who were not trained in it were trained this year and the AIS teachers were so excited to see the growth of the children that they were asked to be trained this year. So, uh, a big thanks to KHR for helping finding the funding to get so many people trained in this. Uh, but there was a lot of excitement in it. So I took the time to go and look at some of the data. So if you just go to the next slide for a moment and then we'll go back. So what I did, I looked at all of the data group for this growth using the I Ready reading assessment that all the students at the elementary school get on their reading, uh, growth. And I looked at their students who were receiving the Orton Gillingham. And what they do is a typical growth measure in the I Ready. So at their grade level, based on their benchmark, to make a full year's worth of growth, they'd make a hundred percent. So as you know, our students who are identified as a learning disability, have reading disabilities, who are getting this reading curriculum, they're there because they've made much less than a hundred years, a hundred percent of growth. They fell significantly behind their typical peers. Our students receiving your in Gillingham reading curriculum last year made a typical growth rate of about a hundred and eleven percent. So they're actually closing the gap to their peers. It actually is just slightly beneath what our student, our Gen Ed students were getting for growth rates, which is just slightly higher than that. So I was ecstatic to see that level of growth. And now that we have our students also getting tier two, tier three interventions through AIS, also receiving this reading curriculum. In addition to, it's not a special ed piece, but addition to the CKLA reading curriculum being given, I have some very high hopes for some pretty rapid growth in our literacy program at the school. So that was very exciting to see. Uh, the teachers were constantly talking it up to me. So I was expecting some really solid growth in it, but to see a hundred and eleven percent of typical growth rate was, uh, outstanding to see. And now that we were expanding it this coming year. So that's going to be nice to see. Hopefully I have some more good stuff to report to you on that. Can you actually go backwards? Thank you. So, so one of the hard parts that we have, uh, are the staffing needs. Uh, we are currently down one school psychologist. We've posted, we've had no applicants and a couple of postings at this point in time. Uh, and you might hear from the principals too, and other positions that aren't filled, uh, from aides, TAs, teaching positions, school psychologists across the board. Uh, we are not getting the applicants. They're just not applying for positions sometimes. So.
Down. How many psychologists?
We are down one school psychologist. And on future slide, you'll see why that could become an issue. So, uh, you know, but it's also, you know, for someone who's been in the district for, you know, a couple of decades at this point in time. It's a major change. You know, we used to get multiple applicants and we used to bring in weed through the resumes and then figure out which six or eight we're going to bring in for an interview. Now to have no one applying is a big change. So it's significant. Last year I mentioned to you that we might have a budget impact on special education if, uh, state ed uh, changes some regulations and that did roll out in early July, they changed special education services from three through 21 to three to 22. So now students to be through the school year in which they turn 22, we are responsible for services. Uh, most of our students who would take advantage of that additional year are students that might be higher cost students. So there is definitely going to be a budget impact by students. And we already have, uh, one student who's staying an additional year already. So that is going to be a change when we look at the budget. Uh, it's, you'll see the numbers later. It's six, but we have an increase of homeschool students receiving who want to access special education services. So we have six homeschool students who are currently coming in for, to receive their special education services. Uh, depending on their childhood immunization status, it's either happening within the buildings or if they're not even as they're not able to come in, then it's, we have another location where our staff are meeting the children. But it is a another piece that we have to manage. One thing that we did last year that we followed through with, that we've mentioned to you in the fall was adding our third speech and language pathologist. So far this has been wonderful. The reason that we added the additional speech and language pathologist was not only our uh, increase of needs for school age students, but also that we could, there aren't enough providers for our preschool students. So we had preschool age children who had IEPs saying that they required speech services, but weren't receiving any speech. We'd reach out, we'd have to list of the county providers and we just couldn't have anybody to apply. So we kept asking, uh, Kim Lay and the CFC secretary would call every week, all the providers and everyone, no one had an opening. So I went to, um, Mr. Chardy, Dr. DeAngelo, and he came up with a proposal that if we hired a third speech and language pathologist, Chatham Central School District would become the provide, the county provider. And now we're billing back the county to help pay for the additional. So the person currently is being split about fifty percent of the time between school age and preschool students. And it's actually been quite easy to do too with the UPK program. Some of the students are right there. Uh, we don't have to travel. We don't ask the parents to bring the children in either for those speech services, but having that third speech and language pathologist has, uh, you know, has really worked out very well. Very briefly, uh, on transportation, I really just can't go through this. If you're out mentioning Josh, Josh is on top of everything. Special education transportation is not an easy piece. We have students going, uh, Albany County, Columbia County, Berkshire County for services. They're not easy routes. Sometimes, uh, the students can present with some long rides. They can present with some behavioral issues on the bus too. I speak to Josh almost daily. He is on top of everything. Uh, he is getting in the car and rushing out to meet buses if there's issues. Uh, he's just phenomenal to work with. So it's just, it's been a nice piece. Thank you. So here's one of the scary ones for me and why the school psychologist shortage. This is, uh, our last five years of initial evaluations to the Committee on Special Education for school age and preschool students. We have seen a sharp increase, uh, in the number of students being referred, especially at the school age level, uh, for special education services. Uh, so you can see last year, sixty-two total referrals, forty-six from, uh, to the Committee on Special Education for school age. And that really was close. More of them came from our child study teams at the elementary, at the elementary school, but it's also close to half of them were parent referrals of parents being worried about their children. So parents calling in and asking. So you look at the school psychologist demands, you're talking about sixty-two students having to be evaluated last year in addition to the seventy or so reevaluations that had to be, uh, they, they had to do plus all the social emotional needs, counseling, crisis intervention, all the other SEL work that they do. So why it's increasing is a big can of worms. You know, there's certainly possibly some COVID learning loss involved in this. The students who are struggling, I'm hoping this Orton Gillingham reading curriculum and the AIS teachers. Uh, we see a little curve in this. But based on what we know early in the school year, we're probably going to see an increase in preschool students, uh, already. We have currently ten children who are receiving early intervention services, which means pre-three before there are responsibility, they're two-year-olds. Uh, we have, and we already have told, let us know, families, let us know their children are turning three this year and want pre, would like preschool services also. So that's separate from any new initials. We already have ten coming in new preschoolers this school year that we're aware of. Uh, and those are three-year-olds, so they're not going to be in our UPK program. So it's, there'll be some logistic piece to that. But you say, well, you know, coming out of COVID, we have had a sharp increase in, uh, referrals to the Committee on Special Education. Okay, so. When you look at the overall numbers over several years here, right, like a seven-year pattern, you can see here, uh, these are the number of students with disabilities year by year. We've actually went down. We're starting to climb again. We're not where we were seventeen, eighteen. Back then in seventeen, eighteen, we also had a much higher overall, uh, student body. Our enrollment, as you know, has decreased. So our percentage of student, even though we have fewer students at a hundred and eighty-nine, it actually is a larger percentage of our overall student body of students with IEPs. Okay, so. So this kind of stays consistent. This was last year's, uh, where we finished the school year, really, this is July first data. So the, still the majority of our students with IEPs are students with learning disabilities. Uh, we have quite a few also with another health impairment. Other health impairment can be a variety of things. Uh, the most common ones we see are anxiety disorders or ADHD, but we've also, this could also fall in with a child with cystic fibrosis, uh, uh, juvenile, uh, arthritis would fall under this, any other type of health issue that can impact a student's learning. Our autism needs remain pretty consistent, multiple disabilities, speech and language, you see that as nineteen, it is a lot more students than those nineteen receive speech and language. There's a lot of students with learning disabilities due to phrenemic skills who also receive speech. And there's children with autism who receive speech services and multiple disabilities and intellectual disabilities also, uh, receive speech services. So that's more than students with emotional disabilities, intellectual disabilities, orthopedic impairments, maybe a student with a hearing impairment also that started the school year. So MED with the most grade levels has most of our students with IEPs. We also have some at the high school, but you can look at, we're actually down a little bit in our outplace students. You look at our five Questar, six private schools and two residential. Our two residential students are those students in CRP beds. So we're not actually funding the residential part of their program. Uh, the stay is with the children's residential project, but we do this, fund the schooling piece of it. Uh, we have two parentally placed students in programs. Uh, they're not necessarily special ed programs. They're students with IEPs that a parent will place in a private school within the district that we're responsible for, those two parentally placed. So any and whether where the child lives in terms of residence, if they place the child in one of our two private schools within the district, they become ours. So if a child lives in Takana Kill School Districts, but they're going to Columbia Christian or the Mennonite school, they're the two private schools, they become our responsibility. And we have six homeschool students who are currently accessing special education services. Okay, so. So this is our outplace. You see, we're actually down in terms of our outplaced in terms of some longitudinal data. So we have currently have eleven students between private and Questar, uh, where we were at nineteen, just a few years back. So it is nice to see that having gone down. Uh, although I do not anticipate a decrease next year on that. We don't have, but one, one will go, we are going to decrease by one, but I don't know if anyone else will go out and you never know students moving in and out. That's a kind of a question too, in terms of general population. Uh, there are children who come in and out of district that impact our numbers, but when you look at the numbers, they stay pretty consistent. You know, we might have fifteen kids move in over the course of a year, but we have almost that many move out when you look at it. So, so it doesn't really impact our numbers that greatly. Okay, so. Okay. So as I told you, we're going for next, this school year, we are expanding the Orton Gillingham reading curriculum, uh, and we did a restructuring of special educate, reading services at special education for reading at special, at MED this school year because of the success at Orton Gillingham. So what we were doing historically is we had our resource room program. So students, in addition to any co-teaching services they received with the co-teaching being taught by a Gen Ed teacher and a special ed teacher, then we get pulled out for some resource room support where they were working on their reading, writing, math skills. The students have done so well with the Orton Gillingham that we switched it to a special reading class and all of the kids K four didn't, scheduling wise, it didn't work in fifth grade, but K four, they all get special reading at the exact same time, eight in the morning to start the day when the kids are fresh. We're ability grouping the kids instead of grade grouping the kids because there's different segments of Orton Gillingham. So a few times a year we're moving in and out of the group. So all of the students will be getting the special reading class who have reading deficits this year at the exact same time of the day. Well, we have enough teach special ed teachers who were trained in it. So the teachers were excited about that and we'll see how it goes. Another change, uh, that we'll be making this year is myself with two special education teachers, uh, Jordan McComb and Megan McCardo were trained this summer in therapeutic crisis interventions for schools. It is a program based on really, uh, trauma-informed care, de-escalating children, keeping children in the classroom. For the worst case, we haven't had a student who's needed any physical interventions in years. Hopefully that continues. There is a piece of that that we're trained in, but it's only about twenty percent of the curriculum. And hopefully it's not having to be used, but eight percent of the curriculum in TCIS is, uh, therapeutic care for children who are in crisis, who have had trauma in their lives, who are having outbursts in the classroom and how to settle them down, regulate the children using trauma-informed care. So we have several staff who are interested in being trained, and this was a trainer or the trainers program. So technically, none of the three of us who were trained are actually trained to implement the program. We're trained to train the people to implement it. So we have three trainers in districts. So we're going to be going through cycles of training, uh, the staff in this program. So we're hoping in terms of uh, social emotional supports, we can provide students, this makes a substantial impact within the school day. Not impacting much of a decrease of students. We don't have, our current seniors are small graduating classes, students with disabilities. So we expect seven students to graduate. And we have one, uh, outplace student who will be aging out like into the school year. So we're not going to be seeing other years. We've had many more students graduate than that. So there won't be a big decrease from graduates when we look at, when I present to you next year. Well, there's a quick snapshot. You guys have any questions?
I have a few here, but does anyone want to go first? Um, so just like quick answers, and I'm, I don't need any specific data. I'm just asking for your impressions. Um, for this new Orton Gillingham, um, reading curriculum, um, that you'd collected data for last year, how many, um, students received that? How, what was the measurement size?
Uh, seventy to eighty.
Okay.
Right around that range.
The, um, this new curriculum, how are we assessing how well the teachers implement the curriculum as designed is?
Excellent question. So one of the things, so one of my concerns with the program is that everyone went for a week-long training. They were thoroughly trained, but we don't have someone coming in. So we're in currently trying to find a consultant to come in to meet with the teachers periodically to look at, uh, fidelity to the administration. And also because as you work through the program, you can get trained in something in a week. And then you come across something that, oh, I didn't experience this. So they didn't cover this in the training. So if we can have a consultant come in to work with the staff, that would be an ideal situation. And that is something we're currently looking for.
That sounds wonderful. If you can figure it out. Uh, so that would be separate from the teacher observations then.
Yes, that would be separate from different administration teacher observations because I can go in and observe them and I can get a sense of what good teaching is, but I'm not Orton Gillingham trained myself. I am not an expert in it. To have someone with that level of expertise specifically look at that program and look at the Orton Gillingham data they're collecting. Cause it's, there's multiple data points they're collecting. They're collecting off of the I Ready, but they're also collecting Orton Gillingham reading data, which I didn't present to you, but I kind of wanted during Gillingham data looked great and I kind of took a quick glance at it, but I wanted to see how it converted to the measures that our other kids are receiving.
Does anyone have questions on the reading curriculum before I switch? Um, okay. So I'm talking about the CSC uptick. Um, I think I asked these same questions last year when we saw the beginning of this curve. Um, and that was a scary number I just saw. So, um, how much of that, I guess the uptick is primary versus secondary ed? Is it, is it distributed across demography or is it?
It's mostly MED.
Mostly primary.
It's mostly, we have a few scatterings everywhere, of course, but it's, uh, mostly students at the elementary level who are reading below grade level.
So this is like K through three ish.
K four.
K four. Um, are they, are they getting determinations at the same rate that they were pre-COVID or is, or there's a lot of parent referrals in that, right? And that's harder.
The determination rate's slightly below. So not everyone. So there's a, you know, there's a lot of the students, not every one of those qualifies for services. Some do, but not all.
Okay. I think that was all my questions. So thank you.
Um, so Matt touched on one, um, maybe it was answered, but the, we, I believe the number was one eighty-nine, uh, special ed.
Total students.
Yeah.
Including preschool.
Yep. And in MED, was it like sixty-two or sixty-four or something like that? Whatever it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might've been seventy-something, but.
Okay. It, it was the highest number.
Sixty-two, okay.
Was sixty-two. Um, and you were saying the majority of those were K through four, is that right?
New referrals.
New referrals.
Referrals are. And in terms of the new referrals, it's a mix of reading, but also speech needs are increased. A lot of those are students with articulation errors. You know, so, you know, we can theorize on why there's an increase of students with articulation errors, but it's, uh, you don't know for sure.
Um, so, so that percentage lower, I, I guess I was trying to rationalize my head, you know, where, how is that? Why is it on the lower spectrum versus maybe a higher spectrum? But the truth is, if we're, if we're linking this to COVID, if that is something that might make sense and we don't really know.
It's one of the variables.
It's one of the variables.
Certainly a variable that's out there.
Yeah. Then that really is going to play across the entire spectrum, right? It's not.
When I speak to my colleagues in other districts, they are expressing to me they're experiencing something very, very similar situations in other districts also.
How many other districts have you spoken to about that?
Usually are the local Questar region people, are the surrounding districts mostly of my colleagues that I'll speak with.
So that a hundred and eighty-nine percentage is, uh, as a percentage, we're talking close to.
Eighteen probably percent.
Whereas back in whatever, two thousand and eighteen, it was what?
Probably seventeen, not much of a difference percentage wise. A few students make a big impact on percentages in a district or so.
So that's interesting. Okay.
I, I had one more. These are, we're, we're, the uptick are landing in the learning bucket.
Learning and speech.
Learning and speech.
But we also owe other health impairment to anxiety is another one, but we've seen a big increase in.
There's probably some clearinghouse for this data that I'm not aware of, but it would be very interesting to see if other districts that have already adopted some of this new curriculum. Um, on the Gen Ed and the special ed side, um, pre-COVID, right? They had practices in place already. Be interesting to see if they saw the same um, CSC curve and I, uh, I don't even know how you'd figure that out because that's a hard.
Yes.
There's so many variables, but, but it was, it's, it was such a, such a drastic uptick that it, it might stand out or it might not. I don't.
Yeah, it's, uh, I felt like I was feeling it during the school year, but I didn't really look at the numbers until, you know, the end of the summer. But then like, oh, that explains things. There were certainly a lot.
So I just have one more question about psychologists. So, you know, if, if we're struggling finding that, uh, filling that position, um, what do we think that impact could mean? Is it literally just not being able to, to, um?
Well, we have three excellence. Thankfully we've increased our numbers of school psychologists over the year due to social emotional needs. So we have, we've met with them several times and we, they come up with a plan for the three of them to meet the needs at this point in time, but we're hoping it's not all year.
Any idea as to why we're not seeing applicants?
It's across the board.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's, you know, whether we're talking E and L teachers, special education teachers, social psychologists, teachers, aides, it's, uh, you know, Spanish teachers, we were seeing it everywhere.
But, but also the private practice alternative has grown significantly.
Well, school psychologists, that wouldn't impact as much.
Totally different track?
It's a different track. They're certified level school psychologists. Their, uh, their certification allows them to work under a school. They can't hang their own shingle.
Okay.
School psychs. Some, some can with, if they have PhD, but the majority of school psychs are working off a sixty-plus credit masters with their certification.
I don't know that we've, I don't know that I've, I've seen that, um, the comps reported, the district comps on those. Um,
In terms of salary?
Yeah, like where we, where we looked at, instead of just like one or two districts, or if we look at, um, you know, I'll basically the whole labor pool is what I'm curious, how we're comparing the labor pool regionally. Um, that would be not necessarily now, but the next time we look at those numbers, I'd be interested in taking a wider look.
Well, anecdotal, you know, we, we had, um, one, one very viable candidate, uh, in the fall. Um, currently employed in another capital region district and, um, very intrigued by our district. I think the, um, the actual commute would have been less, but when it came down to salary, because they were in a capital region school, um, the gap was, was way too large for that individual to ultimately make the leap. So, you know, we are, we are seeing several examples of that. Uh, I think I reported, um, last meeting, um, or maybe it's a great since last meeting, we had that similar experience with library media specialist. Certainly interested in coming to our district, um, but, um, you know, when we get to talking about the contract, um, it's a barrier. We have a couple of ideas, um, and I can't share publicly, but in terms of, you know, how do we evaluate, um, uh, some of the special areas that require, um, larger numbers of credits to become certified, you know, is there an opportunity there to work with the union, uh, in, in regards to structuring compensation, but it's really just too preliminary to, to share any ideas just yet. We, um, we are hopeful that the, the next crop of, um, graduates, um, might be coming out in December. So we'll take another swing or another bite at the apple. Uh, we've had great success with some of our early career, um, psychologists, you know, right out of school on there's some excellent pre-service programs. SUNY Albany has a stellar program and, uh, we've had much success with, uh, at least the initial recruiting um, of those, those individuals. So we're remaining hopeful.
Well, I'm very encouraged about the success with the Orton Gillingham. That, that is a bright spot.
Definitely. It's the beginning. Some good news and bad news. Definitely. It's that beginning. Some good news and bad news.
That is definitely, and as a board, we need to be looking at these numbers and realizing that, okay, it's gonna, there's, we're gonna have to start moving some resources into this because seeing these numbers going up the way they are and with the change to through age twenty-two. Um, yeah, it's gonna rearrange things a little bit. You just need to be aware of that going forward. But other, I love the, uh, the reading. As you'll see in our later on in the agenda, reading is a big deal.
Absolutely.
So we're very happy about that. Thank you.
Because my hearing was, isn't what it used to be. Um, just, so right now we currently have one individual that would be qualified under the twenty-two.
Yes.
Um, and then we're, we're, I know we have several individuals at the high school.
We have several students between, say, seventeen and twenty who will be rolling into the many.
And, and Brian, uh, you may have mentioned this, but, um, the other justification for the speech pathologist is we had contracted for a day and a half, um, previously, and that provider was unable to satisfy that contract. So that was another justification.
We, we got, were able to get out of that piece of the contract with the, uh, that agency because we had a contract and they just were not providing the services.
But we, we talked about selling some of those hours back to the county, right? Did, were we successful there?
Yeah, that's what we're doing. Yeah. Yeah, the kids are getting the services and we're getting reimbursement, so it's all good.
Our prices are gonna go up though.
All of our students, all of our preschool students with speech on their IP are currently receiving speech. That's excellent.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. And now, um, would you like to introduce one of your team members, uh?
Here, supervisor for the cafeteria. She's done a wonderful job. My sixteen here.
I'd like to make a motion that we invite her every month.
Special orders to email them to me. I'll take care of it, which I'll get to the food in just a minute. I'll start with the other stuff first. Um, so good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is well. So far, September has been a good year for us, um, or a good start to the year. Uh, if you look at our breakfast and lunch numbers, breakfast, um, at, uh, the elementary school is up about fifty students, which, you know, was pre-K that's kind of expected. Um, at the middle school though, we doubled the amount of students that we served breakfast compared to September of last year. So that's great. Um, high school has declined, but we did expect that with the hour, you know, the, to change in time when they start their classes this year. Um, so we are looking at some other options for grab and go, quick in and out stuff. Um, as for lunch numbers, we're about the same in MED. Um, again, middle school is up or, uh, more than two hundred meals than compared to last September. So that's great. Um, high school again has declined some. Um, I did notice at the end of September, beginning of October, our high school numbers started to go up. So that's a good thing. Let's hope it stays that way. Um, the big thing to keep in mind when you're comparing the two September is September of last year, we had eighteen days that we served. This year we only had sixteen. Those two days can make our numbers drastically different. Um, so, um, the other thing is student government, um, still planning on meeting with them, get in touch with them and see what we can do for the student body and, and see what they would like. Um, so now onto the food. In front of you, I put, um, a breakfast option that we started. Those are cooked in the morning, so they are a little bit better when they're warm and out of the oven. Um, but it's the cinnamon biscuits, uh, with a pumpkin yogurt dip, and that is pumpkin puree, um, cream cheese and yogurt that we just mix together and make. And so far, middle school, it's all about middle school this year. They are loving it and they beg me to make it. So we've been making it a couple of times a week and they seem to be liking that. And the other one is something we started last year. It's just a coffee cooler. Um, it's again made with yogurt. Um, and we sell that as an a la carte item at the high school because we can only sell coffee products at the high school. Um, and again, the kids are buying a good four or five a day, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up during the week. So. And then some of the other things that we added this year, um, if you don't mind, I'll just pass it around for everybody to look, if you don't mind passing down. Maybe just kind of take a look at it. I spent the summer kind of researching and looking for different ideas and I have a stack of papers that hoping we can put some things together, make some changes. On the tray there, um, we started doing at the high school level, a charcuterie lunch, which is big across the United States at all the schools right now, all the things. Um, but just your typical sorted meats, uh, cheeses, side items. Um, another one is a Lunchable, which just like it sounds, you buy in the store. This one is a pizza one. The kids at the elementary school love it. So it's just, you know, meat, cheese, and some bread of some kind or crackers will do and a fruit. Um, and the other one, it's just kind of, I don't like how that one turned out, but, um, just little roll-ups. They seem to like that little like, let me just grab something quick and eat it. Um, so we can do it with meats and cheeses and, um, tuna. This one is tuna because usually on our typical Monday, we do tuna. Um, so these are just some new things that we've tried for this month. Um, some other items that we have tried, um, is I'm trying to add some new vegetables and maybe some new fruit choices out there. I'm always ordering fresh fruit and, um, veggies, but we tried beets. I know that sounds strange. The kids didn't really go for them. However, we'll try it again. Um, yeah, so we'll try the beets again and see, you know, maybe a second or third time, once they kind of get a try of it. Um, the other one that we tried was Jell-O applesauce. Sounds strange. You just take Jell-O mix into your applesauce. And I got great reviews across the board. Kids liked it a little different. Um, you know, gives a little more flavor to the applesauce. Um, another thing we did at middle school and high schools, we added what we call the flavor station. It's basically a spice rack. So if you wanted a little more garlic in your food or roast, uh, crushed red pepper on your pizza, like a lot of people do, Parmesan cheese, um, they can just go to that rack, shake it on their food, add it to it. And it just, you know, gives a little bit more flavor. So, um, the other thing that I'm looking to do, um, I want to do a try it day. That's what I'm gonna call it. Basically, I, I have been a part of a group of schools across the United States. Um, and seeing what they're doing and a lot of schools are doing things like meatloaf and, um, shepherd's pie, things along that line. Um, and, and, you know, a few other vegetable lasagna, things along that line. But, um, I wanna, I wanna try it. I wanna just make it and give samples out and let the kids try it and, you know, see if it's something that they're looking for. You know, it doesn't hurt to try it. Yeah. So, and then finally, I just, um, want to say, seeing how it is national school lunch week, uh, I just want to say without my staff, then do it. Oh, and that's it. Who's got questions?
I have a question first. So I was just wondering, how do we, um, how do we set, how do we set numbers to the, to like the cost of one of those things? Like what's the, we, are we trying to hit a, uh, a certain, are we trying to just break even? Are we trying to, like, where, just where, how do we come up with that?
Ideally, I try to break even at least with it to, to have a little bit, you know, more would be nice. But with the cost of food in the last couple of years, it's hard to have that little extra. So if I could stay within a, a certain range, and it varies from breakfast to lunch to a la carte items. Um, and, uh, we had, uh, the, um, oh, uh, that gentleman that was here a few years ago, Jim. Um, he's a school consultant. He came in and told us, you know, when we're figuring out our price, we use a certain, um, you know, uh.
Multiplier.
Yeah. And so that's what I do. I figure out what it costs and make sure it's gonna even be worth it. You know, and like the charcuterie brings up just a tad bit. Um, it's like fourteen cents more than the average meal, but uh, she sells about fifteen of those a day.
Barb, I was gonna ask, what, what does this charcuterie lunch go for? What do we charge for that?
Our, our lunch is three dollars and ten cents.
Wow.
Yeah.
You're able to do that?
Yeah. So it, it depends on what we're putting in it. Um, but that one right there would cost us just a little over a dollar. But as you really are, if you, if you're bringing it down by ounces, it's not that much compared to if you buy a whole jar of, you know, olives.
The entrepreneur next to me is thinking fourteen ninety-five on Main Street.
Yeah, right. I'm sorry, what was that? Yeah. Absolutely. We're serving almost, um, two hundred and seventy-five pizzas on a, on a Friday. Yes.
What about the tuna wrap? What kind of reception does that get?
Elementary school love tuna, loves tuna. They, they can't get enough of it sometimes. Don't give it to high school or middle, but elementary school still loves their tuna.
Very good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Interesting. Is that all?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna ask about cost, which you sort of answered.
Yeah.
Um, so there's whole foods in there that are particularly expensive, but how it's less processed? Why, why is it only, you know, fifteen cents more?
It depends because a lot of those fresh fruits and vegetables are subsidized for, from our DOD grant that we have, which means out of my commodity funds, I take some of that and buy fresh fruits and vegetables. So it's not actually coming out of the budget that the school gives us.
And the, um, uh, those type items are available full year or?
Um.
Or similar items?
Similar items.
From the USDA fund?
Yeah.
What about the labor costs? I mean, there's like slicing and stuff, which I presume happens by hand on that.
Yeah, um, most of it, um, is like time you can whip fifteen of those together within forty-five minutes and that's taking her time.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of time. So that.
Right. That's her just going slow, making sure it looks good. So, but.
So those are like side items or is there a charcuterie day? How is that offered?
It's offered a couple of times throughout the week. Um, we, when we do our menus, it's a main entree. And then we have side items to choose from, side meals. For example, um, you know, take with chicken nuggets or pizza, but you also have a deli sandwich. You have a peanut butter and jelly. You have a, um, a grab and go salad. You have a grab and go sandwich. So we have a many items.
So, but that's, that's like not a side item. That's like a whole meal.
That's the meal. Yes. Yeah. Which would our salad would be a whole meal as well. So.
The, um, talk to me, the salads are available on what alternate days?
Every day.
But they're available every day?
At middle and high school, yes. Yeah. Due to time and space at the elementary school, we kind of change it up. So a couple of days a week, we have parfaits, a couple of days a week, we have salads as an alternate choice.
Are, are there other examples of labor intensive alternates that are landing on your menu like that?
Um, I think right now with what we do, that would be the most label, labor intensive is a charcuterie one. Because, uh, everything else is, you know, it doesn't take much honestly to put some meat on a bread and wash some lettuce. Um, salads would be a close second, but we do at the high school alone, an average of twenty salads a day and sell most of them.
That's, um, what, what does one of those look like?
Um, yeah, so you, you're, it's filled with lettuce and. Yeah, one of those containers filled with lettuce and, uh, four or five different kinds of veggies. Um, we'll do, um, buffalo chicken. They do, um, every now and then they'll do a chef salad, which is has like turkey, ham and cheese. Um, you get some kind of grain. It could be, uh, um, a, uh, breadstick, could be croutons. You get cheese in it and you get a fruit. Yeah.
What's the most popular, um, meal in the high school?
In the high school? Italian dunkers.
What is it?
Italian dunkers right now is, they can't get enough of those. And all it is, is cheese filled breadsticks.
Oh.
Yeah, of all things.
Well, it's not really a surprise.
They love those. They'll eat that. If they're available, they will eat that above anything else. Um, and I would say probably next Wednesday's meal, it's gonna be, was last year a close second. And that was what we call carnival day, where we have corn dogs and funnel cake fries, um, apples with caramel dip and so.
So I, I like seeing it plated like that. That's fun in here. So thank you. Um, and I'm wondering if there's any way we can scale that experience to our parent stakeholders who get to see what is on the menu other than, they get the one pager sent home, which has menu items. They don't really mean anything to a parent because they don't see them.
Right.
Um, so not that you'd need to take a picture every day, but it would need, it would be neat to have like a picture version of that menu, um, someplace. Um, I don't know.
We might be able to do something on the food service section of the website and direct families to it.
Uh, well, you know, I, I'm.
Can I just make another comment? How many of the parents are actually gonna look at it for Barb to put the extra time and effort?
Well, well, Beth, I, I, it's the most common complaint I hear from parents, which is my kids don't like the food. And it's hard to understand what that even means because it, it's not even necessarily a reflection on the menu because sometimes they don't walk up to the line. And I think parents need, and, and parent, and kids are picky at home too, right? But that is the complaint that comes home with kids. And I hear it weekly in my house, but also weekly from other stakeholders in the community, other parents. So it's a very common complaint. But I think that communication can go a long way in communicating to the parent stakeholders, like, oh, this reminding the kid, this is that thing you like. It's just like I make it at home or, or not, right? But being able to have that visual communication line because it's, the kids are going and they're having their experience in the school and then they're bringing in their feedback home and the parents are in vacuum. And it's not just me having this from four vegetarians and immediate, right? That all bring feedback home, although one, one of them eats every day, every meal you guys offer. Um, and I'm like.
You're a middle schooler, right?
Uh, you know what? It's, um, it's Milo.
Oh, okay. Cause I see Bren every now and then too.
Bren, sometimes, sometimes. But, um, I think that it, it's not my kids. I hear it from other, particularly young children that are just starting school, where this is like a whole new food culture. They have the food culture of their home, but then they're coming into elementary school for the first time and they're eating maybe two meals out of three in a day and it's all new food culture. And I, I, I really do think that's missing and I think it would be incredibly valuable, but it doesn't necessarily need to be a job for lunch people because we have other people in the building with cameras, um, and we don't need to do it every day. Maybe once per item would be enough. Um, but, and it doesn't even need to be a this year thing because this, it might be a, a project that takes a while to collect. But, um, I, I think that, um, there's really, uh, when my kids and other parents bring feedback like that, I don't even know what to tell them because I don't know what the food looks like.
Well, I invite all of you at least. I mean, I know my.
Well, I really enjoyed seeing that.
Yeah.
Um, and other items you bring in, but I think more importantly, like the names on the menu don't necessarily correspond to something that people that haven't seen the items know what they are.
Right.
Um.
We can look into it, see what we can do. Yeah.
Um, thanks for coming in. Uh, you know, I always love seeing the data, but we don't need to see it every time.
I actually have it all written down in case you asked for exact numbers.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing. Um, first of all, I want to thank Barb. Been working at their twelve years, even here sixteen, I think, and, uh, you've done a great job with innovation. Um, we had wings. We, I mean, every year you do some different things. So ever, actually advertising some of these ideas might be a good thing.
I think it might increase our, um.
So I, I, I agree with that, but the one thing I will say is we've dropped enrollment, but we've kept our participation even higher. Uh, we've been able to actually decrease the amount of money that we have to fund. The general fund funds the cafeteria, which is amazing. So we were always concerned when we were doing a hundred thousand last year, I don't think we transferred any money. So, you know, you've done a great job really of promoting these things and working with student government, which is, you know, is excellent because, you know, the kids are gonna, you know, they're the ones that, they're the consumer, right? So I like your creative ideas with kind of the limited cost structure that we can have. So I wanna, I wanna thank you and your staff.
Well, thank you.
I, I think what Matt's referring to happens at the elementary school, but, you know, while you're talking, I, I was thinking, you know, we, we do have, um, a very creative photographer and one of our art teachers and we have an art program. We have a business, a new business teacher. You know, could there be some sort of, um, marketing, um, or, or some other project that can be, you know, we can assist you with? Cause I, I do, I am sensitive. I don't think we can create more, uh, work for you. We'd have to figure out how that, um, we could obtain that goal without it being a, a really heavy lift.
That could roll into the curriculum, you know, maybe students get involved.
Few years ago too, I, I'm going back probably eight or nine years ago, we did the open houses, but nobody walked in. We had food samples and everything. We had food samples and everything.
No, I think it's gotta be like an Instagram feed or something to really get participation.
I think Brett's trying to ask a question over.
And you know, maybe a simple place to start is just to get hook you up with Adam and then he can do a do a story or two. Um, for social media on some of the new offerings this year, maybe just just to have start someplace.
Okay. Thanks, Barb. No, thank you.
Okay, we are ready for our student representatives report.
Um, so I just wanted to start with how Spirit Week went and that actually went really well. Um, everyone participated in the themes. Um, I saw lots of students wearing all the different outfits for each day. Um, the football game also went on as expected, which was nice since we thought it might be canceled because of the rain. Um, but the senior night did get moved to the next day, but that still went very well. Um, I was a part of it as well and there was like a sunset in the background, very pretty. Um, and then we also had the dance, which a lot of people went to, um, and it was very fun and I think that the students enjoyed it. Um, we've also had a couple of meetings so far, um, first for student government since the positions were recently elected. Um, we didn't talk about too much. We did talk about the blood drive, um, which is coming up October twenty-sixth and we're gonna be like promoting that. Putting up posters, um, trying to get people involved and having people sit out at tables so that people will um, sign up for the blood drive. Um, we also had our first NHS and TRIAM meetings, um, kind of combined together, but um. We just talked about service opportunities and elections, um, which we've already done for NHS and TRIAM is still currently ongoing for elections, but. Mainly talking about service opportunities that we can do for both just the regular honor society, but also for um, the music honor society. And um, I think we're already planning some trips, so that should be really well. Um, and then progress reports are coming out soon at the end of this week, so that's important to note for um, parents who are looking for those. Um, the TRIAM induction is also coming up the twenty-fifth, so the day before the blood drive and that's for um, new members coming into the. Music um, society. Um, and then last I just wanted to mention that the girl soccer team was just state ranked for. Um, by the New York State Sports Writers Association, um, they've been doing really well. I went to a lot of their games and, yeah.
So TRIAM, is that a new organization? I'm I'm not familiar with that.
Um, that's been around for, I think, a little while now, but it's like a music association for anyone in like chorus, band. Orchestra, just who's been participating in for a long time and has high involvement in any of those.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Barb, do you want your tray? You can take that. We're gonna leave some of these for after the meeting. People wanna open them up in Triumph.
Thank you, Barb. Maybe not. Maybe we don't leave next to Mike.
All right, so nobody has any more questions? All right, thank you, John. Okay, we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have um, three items for you this evening. Um, at the last meeting, we had a parent join us for public comment. Um, I wanted to let the board know that um, that I reached out to that parent and shared some updated information with them. Um, but I also wanted to share that here. Uh, as you recall, the parent brought up a a situation that occurred on one of our buses where. Um, a student um, had been left after a morning run. And I think it's it's very important to know that we took this very seriously and here are some of the steps that we're working towards and that are still in progress. Um, following that event, Josh facilitated a mandatory meeting of all drivers on Friday, September twentieth. Uh, in that meeting, he um, thoroughly reviewed um, standard operating procedures in terms of pre and post-trip runs. Uh, we reviewed the importance of uh, uh, drivers deactivating the child safety alarm. And we went over New York State Education Department regulations, um, stating that all buses should have their loading unloading lights on while. In a school zone. With that said, we've also taken some steps about a week ago, Sunday, um, the uh, stripes in the parking lot where our buses park have been re. Repainted, um, are the what we're working on is our buses um, over some time. Um, have been parked too close together and haven't been able to adequately use those loading unloading lights. Uh, what Josh is working on with our drivers is to be able to properly space those buses, so now they can use those lights. Um, what we did discover uh, in in our in our work is that we do have three older buses that do not have a um. Uh, a switch on it that allows the driver to temporarily shut off that alarm. Avoiding the student having to do it in the back. Um, and we and we had, I know we had some lengthy discussions regarding this, but those three buses will be retrofitted by the manufacturer in the coming weeks. So that all our buses have the ability to be able to load and unload students with the lights on. And then thus activating the child safety alarm, which requires the driver to walk to the back of the bus. And ensure that no one um, is is on the bus. I do remind you that that is a safety net. That that doesn't pro, that doesn't restrict the driver from having to do a manual walk through the bus post uh, pre and post-trip. So we're working on that. Um, another thing that came out of conversations um, is and it came up uh, when um, the parent was here. Is the notification system, the attendance notification system. It's not a perfect system, but it is yet again a safety net. So what happens is teachers take attendance in their classrooms using our student information system. Um, we do allow a little time for students to um, check in if they're they're late or tardy. And uh, at a certain point, um, I believe it's nine AM, that system then um, pushes a file to our mass notification system. Which in turn um, calls those students who are still indicated to us as being absent. Uh, you heard uh, in um, the conversation that um, that system had not been properly activated for the start of the school year. Uh, we have taken two measures uh, to remediate that. The first is we now um, have a system notification programmed in. That if that um, system does not properly make those calls, that we're uh, the system administrator is notified. That did that 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 did not take place. So we've put a safety measure um, in 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 that system as well. We also uh, through a um, suggestion of one of the parents that we spoke with is. Up until now, we had just been making a phone call um, regarding the student absence. Well, the recommendation. Um, included, could we expand that to include an SMS text and an email? And the system had that capacity, so we have programmed that notification to be simultaneously a phone call, a text. And an email, uh, supposing that sometimes a parent isn't near their phone or doesn't have the proper service. But might be able to get an email or sometimes a text will go through depending on coverage. So um, the the point here is that we um. Uh, we learn from this mistake and that we're putting steps in place to ensure that that never happens again. It was inexcusable. We're not hiding behind it, um, but we are taking um, the proper steps to make sure that it doesn't reoccur. Um, so I wanted to make sure that the board was aware publicly of what we were doing in that regard. And last, or I'm sorry, a couple of things. One, the um, Chatham Education Foundation met um, this past week. Uh, as I I think, uh, Muriel, I think you're on on the board, um, we discussed. Um, the upcoming deadline for proposals, which takes place on Monday, the sixteenth. Uh, all staff in the district have been um, reminded of that deadline. And you know, the educational foundation is a wonderful resource for twenty plus thousands, twenty plus thousand dollars annually. In twenty-five hundred dollar increments to do creative, innovative um, little programs. Um. There's two funds that that support that. There's the Arts and Humanities Fund and then there's the White Fund. Um, those are combined by the committee and the grants are um, evaluated and then um, awarded. We have done great things like take trips to Broadway plays. We've um, supported um, trips to um, flying deer. Um, I know Sandy's uh, on on the call, um, we've had um, uh, saltwater aquariums and. Supported the robotic robotics program and just a plethora of really great innovative ideas that are supported by that education foundation. So. Um, I thank you to uh, um, Judy Matthews, who's now um, the president of that um, of that. Board and is doing a wonderful job. There's some new members of the board, so there's kind of a resurgence of excitement going on. And I'm very thankful and and I'm sure the board is as well to their efforts. Uh, last but not least, next Monday is a early dismissal for staff development. Uh, we're going to do something um, that we haven't done here before. That half day is dedicated to the entire teaching and teacher um, assistant staff and administrators. Who will be taking part in a reunification um, event. Um, on that day, we are working in collaboration with the Quest R three Health and Safety Service. Um, to facilitate something called a um, standard uh, reunification method. Um, should the district require um, reunification, it really takes place when we are unable to. Um, dismiss or transport students from our facility. And so that reunification um, event is meant to um, help our staff understand what might occur. Should we be in that situation? It's really the first attempt at making sure people understand, understand common vocabulary. And some of the logistics involved in such a major effort to reunify um, students uh, with their parents or guardians, should there be a crisis event. Um, this is part of uh, the vision of a regional reunification um, plan. So the the thought there is that not only will we be familiarizing our staff with how to reunify. But also inviting them to participate in a mutual aid kind of participation. So in other words, if a. Um, New Lebanon or Taconic Hills needed a location to reunify their students. We may host that reunification and provide some regional support um, to our colleagues who might be, who might need that and vice versa. So um, if we were need, we, if we were to need to reunify, you know, we may go to a sister district. We may go to a a. Columbia Green Community College, we might go to a a the CTE Tech Center. And there we would be met with uh, people from the regional group that would help support us in that effort. So that's taking place on Monday. The uh, event will um, begin with a with a with a briefing. Um, and then there is a uh, an exercise that we'll all be participating in. And then there'll be a debriefing question and answer period at the end. We'll be together from twelve thirty to three thirty. So I'll report more after that has taken place. So it's our first endeavor in um, trying to bring people up to speed. We always hope when we practice these um. Drills and and um, procedures that will never need them, but we want to be best prepared if we if we should need them. So. Wanted the board let, I wanted to let the board know, um, there's an email detailing all this coming to you later tonight. And that's my report.
Thank you, Sal. Um, we are now going to the board committee reports. Start with the facilities committee. All right. We're gonna start with.
Quick operational report, very quick. Um, just a couple of items. I want to thank the maintenance crew, uh, John Thorson, JB. For juggling the homecoming events. Friday was a washout. You know, they moved games. Everything Saturday, the maintenance came in at seven in the morning to get the soccer fields ready. Actually, our board president Fred Hutchinson and myself in between games put the speedy dry down, so everything really went off without a hitch. Now, you know, everyone came together as a team and got that all done, so. And then Saturday night, we had the senior night. It was a little different without all the football fans, but it was a nice night and I'm happy we could have all those events for homecoming, because it was a difficult weekend. And just the last thing I want to um, thank Peter Homrath. He's on uh, for retirement notice. He's gonna retire uh, our maintenance mechanic. For a number of years here. Uh, he actually came in uh, on Saturday with Andy to help do the fields, so I wanna just, you know, I wanna thank all that he's done with. Getting all the fields ready over all of these years, um, you know, dedicated employee to our district. That's all I have on that report.
Thanks, Mike.
You can tell it's not budget season.
Okay, now we will go to the building and department reports. Wait, no, I've run out of.
Committee.
Board committee, yes. Put that page over there. Okay, facilities committee.
Dawn and I met with the facilities committee, uh, both of our first time there. Uh, well, maybe I've been there a couple of times over the last five years, but. Um, we're late-stage planning on our capital project. Uh, we got a big deadline coming up on uh, December first. Uh, where we have to get our final plan over to New York State for um, design approval. It seems like we're we're on track, but it is a tight timeline, so um. Uh, SEI is um, you know, really buttoning things up there. Um. We're projecting for cost estimates right now at um, two mi- two million dollars over the allotted amount of money. If we were to proceed through all of the in-scope items as well as the alternates. Um, so some effort is going into, in addition to getting the design just right, um, also. Seeing where there's opportunities for for savings maybe on 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 the scoping. Um, but uh, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna cross our fingers for bidding season, which will be uh, in the spring. Um, and we'll see what we have room for. Um, I, Dawn, I don't know if there's anything material you'll think I I didn't.
No, I think you covered everything.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions that you want me to bring to the committee?
What is the projected bidding um, date that we're gonna send things out, just a?
Well, um, the deal we have with the state is that if we get it in by December first, they should see their approval about mid-January. Which would put our bidding out somewhere in probably early to mid-February.
Okay.
Um, certainly by the end of February. So we're right in line with the construction. The most desirable kind of time of year to be bidding for summer projects in twenty twenty-four. So we're we're right on the published. Timeframe that we shared with the with the um, public and that, you know, was on all of our um, newsletters.
And once those bid goes out, I'm trying to remember, is it a thirty-day? It's a thirty-day, isn't it?
Typically, if you recall last time, um, we extended it by a few weeks.
We did.
To encourage some additional bidding, but I think by default it begins at thirty days.
And what was uh, what was the figure that this two million figure that um?
Well, you know, keep in mind, if you think about our project.
Yeah.
Um, we included a number of alternates.
Yeah, yeah.
Knowing that we would only move forward with those alternates should the bidding be favorable. So when you include the items that were in the base scope and all all the alternates. Were about two million dollars over on the projections that come from the construction manager. So.
Yeah.
Not not, you know, we had some items, we had some alternate items that were valued at a million dollars, so. Um, that wouldn't be uncharacteristically a problem right now. We most in the meeting felt that we're pretty much where we want to be.
So they're still in the in the design stage, are they?
Right, they're they're buttoning up the design.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
I have one question. Um, the colliers and planning, you know, I I don't know if there's been discussion as to when. Work actually might start, assuming that, you know, big goat smooth and everything was forward. Is there a projection as to when we think? Are are we thinking nothing is happening until the summer or potentially stuff might happen prior to that?
Yeah, if I if I had to speculate, you know, um, thirty bids go out um, early to mid-February, come back. Um, mid to end of March, purchase orders are awarded, uh, lead times. Um, I I can't see much happening before the end of June, uh, early July of twenty-four. Uh, I don't think they've made the final determination as to uh, what will be phase one, what will be phase two. Um, certainly, um, it's probably, as you know, being in the in the industry, um, the HVAC project at MED will very. Unlikely be the first summer. That's a major undertaking, lead time for HVAC units, that kind of thing. Um, so we, you know, I probably by the next, as we get closer to the final design, um, I think we'll be able to better. Um, indicate what projects will be phased summer of twenty-four and which will be for summer of twenty-five, but we're still. You know, as you know, um, when you run the committee, we're still aggressively attacking the timeline and our hope is that we will be able to do all. Construction in those two summers. Um, that's what we've planned.
We looked, I think, one of our meetings, we looked at, they asked, excuse me, if they could possibly do something during the school year, but. Looking at the things and even I thought maybe we could, but you know, you couldn't even do the auditorium, because you got Shakespeare the first thing in the in the fall. There's no way that you could, you know, do something inside the school district.
It's it's gonna be interesting to see, you know, the scope.
Yeah.
There's some, there's a lot of stuff being touched and a lot of mess is gonna be made. Um. So.
It'll be in the summertime, it'll happen.
And once we we get closer to understanding the phasing, we'll have to have discussions in terms of how that may or may not impact summer programming.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Very well, as late as today, you know, we're having conversations in the admin meeting that, you know, it it may not be feasible to have. All of the same summer programs we typically have.
You're right.
All the construction going on, so, but it's a little premature to to make a final decision on that. Yeah, and I know, I know we've got some teachers connected. Yep, and I know, I know we've got some teachers connected tonight. And I, you know, they're anxious to know where some of the, you know, work at the high school. When that will take place, because there's gonna be some time and effort having to pack up. And, you know, be, be prepared for the construction. So as soon as we have more information in the coming months, we'll certainly pass that along.
I mean, we're probably gonna be guessing, seeing some stuff have to move to the MED because we're not gonna be working on that. We're not gonna be working on the air conditioning system the first year.
We're not, but we have quite a bit of flooring going in, so how disruptive that may be.
Right.
I can't see that the flooring and the air conditioning can happen necessarily in the same summer. I mean, I'm just supposing, so, you know, MED may be disrupted both summers.
I have one more question here. And it's a, not directly related, but I'm just wondering if the district has had any. Comments good or bad about the, the new sign? The new sign?
The little bit of feedback that I have is, has been all positive. I haven't heard a single comment about it, you know, being too bright or being obnoxious, you know. The, this will sound small, but you know, just to show up one day and see the mums planted on the front there. It just, it just seems like it's always, it seems like it's always been there, it fits. And, you know, Adam's getting better at adding some graphics the fall, you know. The early dismissal, he's getting a little better at trying to make it a little bit more aesthetically without being obnoxious because we know what our, the expectations are. But he's getting better at that as well. So I, I don't know if anybody else has feedback, but it's all been positive that I've, I've heard.
I've only heard good things, yeah. The, the one sign comment I have is multiple people have told me, when is Chatham gonna recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day? And I said, I don't know, isn't that a New York thing? And then I, and then I was thinking, is it a New York thing? I actually have no idea. Sure, but on the sign and on, we're not using that terminology everywhere. I don't, I don't know what the right thing to do is, but the comment was passed to me as a result of seeing that beautiful picture on the sign that really drew people's attention to it.
So we'll take that under advisement because, you know, Adam and I have had that conversation, I think, a year ago. And I, I'll have to check into our rationale on that.
But it's, it's. It seems to be rolling downhill, it, it's not a passing pad, so. I'm gonna name it.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to new business instruction. We did all that work on our goals and now we put that in here for us to have a motion to approve. The Chatham Central School District Board of Education Goals. And the.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? So. Should I read the goals or just move on to the next?
Now that you've approved them, I'm gonna ask Adam to also, you know, make them public as a result of tonight's meeting. So, and we'll start rolling these, I'll share them, although I know had some feedback today. We'll make sure that all staff are aware of our new Board of Education Goals.
Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to consensus agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda J through K as written, can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any questions? Okay. But along to items for future agenda.
I actually like to make one comment. I, just a big, big thank you to our, our teacher on Tosu again this year. So. In the elementary school, our new dean.
Oh, yes. Yes, that, that was good. Glad to. That he's stepping up for that. Hey, anything else? Anybody have any more questions? Okay, are there any items for future agenda that the board would like to suggest?
Just a quick update on facilities, we did discuss the soccer field. It, I realized when I was passing along a reminder from, from our superintendent that that was handed down to facilities. I'm not sure that I've received enough feedback on what people didn't like about the soccer field. Because I've heard different categories of things and I think for us to, to look at it. You know, people complain about a lot of stuff. And the fields have been improving the last couple of years, so. Yeah, like the, the grass quality or is it the levelness or is it the drainage or is it all related? Yeah. But they're, but they're, they're sort of in contradiction with each other, right? Because if you're gonna, you're gonna, you're starting over on turf, if you're throwing a bunch of. If you're level, re-leveling the feed field, you're like starting over on turf, but.
I would say the, the mud around it is, at least, you know, this, this season has been difficult. But, you know, not in the field, but it's been so wet.
Has been a wet year.
It's been a tough year for that.
Alright. I think we need to look into it and maybe.
Well, there, 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 there's, there's the direction of trying to do something physically with the earth, right? And then there's the direction of, well, let's just take the plant life that's there and make it the best playing surface we can. And we can only do one of those at a time, really. So I don't have an opinion on this, but. Certainly moving a bunch of earths around the. It, it, it can't, well, there's been some, well, Fred brought it up, first of all, but he's not the only one that's, that's noted it. Versus other schools soccer fields are, you know, our varsity playing service, it isn't great. It's uneven, parts of it slope, it can get muddy. The, the mixture of the, of the, you know, the crabgrass mixed in with the regular grass sometimes makes it difficult to, to have that even surface. So I. We've been, we've been overseeding and, and aerating and that has been improving things, but I'm not sure that's enough. I don't know that it's not enough either, it might just need another year or two.
Just a couple options, so the crabgrass is terrible on both fields. So when the crabgrass dies off, you have holes all over the field. If you look at any other field we go to, we have the worst field probably. So the other thing is when you're kicking, corner kicks out of the bottom half, you're kicking out of a hole, like it slopes right off. So we, we're not looking to spend millions of dollars on this, but, you know, Andy made a good point. You, we can come to the board and talk about spraying, you can spray for safety and there's some things we can talk about, some districts do that. So you can get rid of the crabgrass because overseeding, it helps every year, but it takes a long time. So that's like, you know, one of the options that this is not an expensive option actually is to make the grass better. I'd like to get someone in here, we just need some advice on just, what can you do to level the field a little bit? Like I said, we're not looking at a drastic project, but something to make it, yeah, it slopes right off. And then the grass, the grass quality are the two, those are the two things. Goes to the roadside. But the grass quality is another big piece when you compare, I go to all the soccer games, right, and all the football games. So you can see the difference in every other field, so.
I want to just improve it. Some people have nightlights too, but I think that the surface is really.
One, and one good thing, I always hear about the scoreboard. So JB, I asked, why can't we use the football scoreboard? So we're gonna try tomorrow, I think we can move the box out. And because the football, you can see it right up there, so it just keeps, you know, you just need the time and the score. So we're gonna have one of the, one of our, one of the soccer girls that's hurt is gonna keep score and keep the time. Because we've had a major problem with clocks over the years, so that might solve that problem, hopefully.
I already brought new agenda items, anyone else?
I just have a question about preschool and we, we may have talked about in the previous meeting. But at some point in the year, will we get any kind of, I don't know, how it's going and preschool update?
Absolutely, let's see, it's. What if we try to give it a couple of months? You know, we still have the little folks adapting to their, their newest venture. We certainly have some of the children who are not four, who are, you know, have, are being transported by their parents, so they're not on the buses. But let's give it a couple of months and we'll have Kristen and the team come in and just give you an update in terms of. I, I think our overall impressions are that they're going, it's going well. We do have a few children who are like, again, having a little difficulty adjusting to the, their new, their new surroundings. But for the most part, I'm pretty pleased with how, how it's going.
What made me think of it was, we're talking about facilities and I wonder the, the, the play area. In and around MED, I'm wondering if, if it would make sense to consider. Making any kind of a, you know, addition or change to some of that equipment that might accommodate.
I, I'm vaguely remembering Kristen mentioning something about our playground equipment. Maybe age appropriate already because we had preschool and maybe embellishing that a little bit.
Yeah.
If I would invite the board to drop me an email in terms of some of the questions or certainly concerns you have. And we can build those into a presentation, let's say next month sometime. We can give you some number, some, you know, update on, on participation, you know, who ended up showing up, who didn't. What our teachers' impressions are, how we're incorporating some of the encore areas. So how's it going with physical education and art and music and to what extent we've been able to accommodate that? And, and some of the, you know, the other impressions that the teachers have been sharing with the principal. Oh, okay, yes, he does have his hand up. Let me see, Fred, I'm gonna try to promote you here. Okay, you should be coming up here. Switching over. You are, you are live.
Hey folks, sorry I'm not able to attend in person, appreciate patching me in. Matt, it's, as you were talking, I was raising my hand because I think that your first question about the soccer fields, which is, you know. What the scope and what we're kind of looking for, and then you articulated all of those things really, really well. I think we're talking about, you know, the need to continue overseeing, but also some drainage issues. Some ideas I've seen used was to provide a half a field for recreational purposes, keeps the kids off the, the pitch when it's not being used. You know, outside the school day. So, and flattening it out, like getting it to a better level. But now I'm going backwards in the conversation, so I don't.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're into our second public comments. The purpose of the second public comment period is for the Board of Education to hear comments that are specifically related to items included on this evening's agenda. During this public comment period, which will not exceed twenty minutes in total duration and three minutes per speaker. The Board of Education will hear comments from students, parents, employees, district residents, district property and business owners. Other individuals have received prior approval in accordance with policy fifteen ten will also be heard at this time. Do we have anybody?
Did you want to make a comment about?
Sure, I can do that. When we met for the agenda planning, we discussed just some of our goals of getting more community involvement. And it seems that it didn't make sense to have the agenda specific public comment period right in the beginning. When we hadn't even discussed the agenda yet. So anybody who wants to talk about it now has heard everything and they will have more of an informed opinion. And we have had instances where we've had folks sitting here waiting and waiting, wanting to say something, either positive or negative. But then just ran out of time because our meetings sometimes get a little lengthy, so we decided to reverse it. So we'll have open public comment period for the beginning. So that any community members that are gonna come in or short on time, we could hear what they have to say. And then anybody who wants to talk specifically about the agenda will heard all this information and will be able to engage in that conversation. Or have more information available to them. So we're just trying to see how this works and if we can get more community engagement, that's the goal. Getting people in here just to see what we do here, that was the plan.
That's a wonderful idea.
Thanks.
I like that idea a lot. I'm glad to see us kind of going back to that because that's where it was years ago.
Very good.
So we have. I mean, make sure, after, one, two, three. Fred plus four.
So we'll just allow some time, see if anyone raises their hand.
And we do, we have, assuming it's Jen Diorio, and I'm gonna promote her to panelist. Jen, I don't know if your hand is up by. By mistake. Because when I promote you to panelist, it got declined. Oh, there we go, perfect, I think we got it now. And then Sandy, after Jen has done all, will give you the floor as well. Maybe Jen has taken her hands off. I'm going to promote Sandy and then if Jen, I made a mistake, we can get you in next.
I apologize, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm new to the Zoom meeting thing, so I wasn't totally sure how it. This is Jen Callier, the. Yes, sorry, a different Jen.
Different Jen, I'm sorry.
That's okay, the Jen from, the parent from the last meeting. I just wanted to say that I appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate you calling me earlier this afternoon. About. About the subject at hand and, and the board addressing everything today.
Can you make it louder?
Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
It's better.
Okay, so yes, I very much appreciate you giving me a phone call and discussing the. You know, the issues that we had talked about previously and. Yeah, I just want to say that like, I appreciate it. And I think that it's a really good step in the right direction in terms of, you know, making some corrective actions. And, you know, just making sure everything's like working the way it should be. So, thank you for listening.
I greatly appreciate your feedback.
Yes, thank you.
You know, Jen, as, as a new parent, we never want to start off on the wrong foot. So you've got a, hopefully you got a long journey with us and you're just starting out in preschool. We want to make sure that your experience here is exceptional, so thank you.
Right, thank you, I, I went to Chatham, Chatham School too, so, you know. This is a district that has been, always been great and, you know, we want our kids to have the same experience. So I thank you for pushing forward to try to make that happen. Thank you.
And Sandy, you should have, there you go.
There you go.
There we go.
There we go. Um, so, hi, everybody, I'm actually gonna speak as a community member. Because I loved what Mary Ann said about, you know, changing the, the public hearing. Comments to being able to speak about anything at the beginning and, and agenda related at the end. To try to get more community involvement and I, and I love that idea. And I also was really intrigued by Barbara's presentation. And I think, I think Matt talked about maybe doing pictures of the, of the menu items. Carol Williams has, she does our announcements on the TVs. We have TVs in the cafeteria and in the lobby for announcements. And so maybe putting pictures of like the, the new food items or the, you know, the interesting or the new ideas for the week. Would be something that could be promoted on those TV monitors during like the announcements throughout the day. And would get more kids to, to pay attention and, and to partake because I'm headed down for charcuterie for sure. And also I wanted to, I don't know if Brian Simon is still there, but I thought his presentation was. Um, and also I wanted to, I don't know if Brian Simon is still there, but I thought his presentation was um, really eye-opening. Uh, you know, being in the high school, we see, you know, the kids coming into the high school, but to see how it's, how it's starting so young in the elementary school and then, and then filtering up to us. Uh, you know, this, the special education, the social emotional learning, um, the difficulties with learning disabilities. Lack of parental uh, involvement in, in education and certainly the social emotional pieces is really important and I'm really happy that the district is taking a, a hard look at that and, and making decisions based on, on data and input from stakeholders. Um, because there's certainly a lot of work to be done. So got good things. You guys are, are on the mark and I, and I appreciate that. So thank you. As a community member.